Hi, everybody. My call for order is this. Hi, everybody. Call for order is this hybrid workshop meeting of the Havel Park Board of Education. Welcome, everybody. The New Jersey Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the wider public can have parents go to the center to attend meetings with helping bodies at which any business affecting their interests is expensed right of time. In compliance with the Public Meetings Act, the Havel Park Board of Education has paused notice of this meeting, setting towards a timely location to be submitted for publication on the review and start order, posted on the board website. I need 48 hours of capacity here. Remember, the public will be addressed before we get an opportunity to sow toward board measures.
Sure, Ms. Gonzalez is here. Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Ms. McFatimena-Cola? Ms. Bruce?
Here.
Mr. Rosalind?
Here.
Ms. Voorhees?
Here.
Mr. Wilber?
I believe in the why of the United States of America and to the one like the Sam's one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we actually started meeting just to kind of over how we're going to be doing things a little differently tonight, was trying to keep our usual schedule. We're going to do our usual both communications and that or student representative reports, and then Dr. DePoege will give a superintendent report, and she's going to focus on proposals to Catholic charities to manage our before after school program. After that, we'll give a question and answer between the board and their representatives, and then we'll have our first public comment. That public comment will be for you as the speaker. Typically, the first public comment period, we limit it to 30 minutes. Tonight, we'll, if we need to, when I suspect we will, will set it to 45 minutes. And then we will be recessing to executive session to review our options with legal advice. Can't promise how long that will take. We're going to do our best to be very efficient and keep that to under an hour, but at that point, we will be going to executive session. Then we reconvene to public session, and we'll continue with agenda as it's written. This is a workshop meeting, so we're not voting on the committee reports or agenda items. We will be voting on what the fore and after school proposal, that's going to be the only location tonight. Towards the end of the meeting, it'll be another public comment period, how we always do it, but just to reinforce that, and at that point, there is no time limit on speakers. So we go through communications, which this bunch were very old thing, and then summarizing them, we had about 16 that made it to this list that were related to the fore and after school program, from what I could tell, from what I read. There's a couple of emails related to the middle school issue without trips and grades and so forth, and one was about English instruction, one was following up on our last school board meeting. I think that covers all of them, just generally speaking. One was concerned about a voting process, but that's pretty much our communication. We got some obviously after this with, and then we'll hear a weekend next week, so we'll be aware of that. Okay, our students' representatives. Is this your last, is this your next one?
No, last one.
So for urban school, our kindergarten living garden shows are this week, not Thursday, Friday. The first runners are very excited to visit Florida on Thursday. Registration is still rolling for incoming kindergarten and first grade students. Pre-grade registration is complete. Our preschool students enjoyed a fun water day last Friday. Thanks to our PTO for the yummy ice pops. For updated information, please visit our website or social media.
And for our school's spring concert, that's Thursday, June 8 at 7:00 p.m. The fourth grade field trip is on Friday, June 9. The fifth grade picnic is at Dawson Park on Friday, June 9. The third grade field trip is Friday, June 16, and the fifth grade moving up ceremony is Friday, June 16 at 10:00 a.m.
For the middle school, if you're not returning to the district next year, please reach out to the main office, ASAP. We call it 725722401, or email Ms. Santiago or Ms. Attenazio at m.santiago@husechools.net, or at asentazio@husechools.net respectively.
The sixth grade trip to Dawson Park is on June 8. Second grade field day is on June 14. The eighth grade trip to Dorn is on June 13, and the eighth grade field day is on June 15. Also, the eighth grade dance is on June 15.
Regarding the end of year dance, there is an academic behavioral concern in grade level two, a scheduled meeting with the parents to discuss whether they can support their child during the evening class.
And finally, at high school, the band's free concert is tomorrow at 7:00 p.m., so everybody, please come out and support our grandkids. The senior trip to Dorney Park is on June 9, and trip forms and money are due on June 7, this place, and they're located in the main office. And the senior celebrations, the barbecue, are on June 16, and school is closed on June 9, but there will be a half day on June 1st. The graduation ceremony will be on the front lawn for the class of 2023 on June 21 at 1:30 p.m. Friday graduation will be at 10:00 p.m. on June 21, and there will be an early dismissal and public return on June 22, the last day of school.
Any questions and comments for other speaker parties?
We're just saying it's the happiest report of the year.
Okay, Dr. DePoege.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So thank you for the second to last student representative report. I attended some of senior prom last weekend, and we had a blast. All the students looked absolutely beautiful inside and out, and it seemed like a wonderful event. So please come out tomorrow night to support them for the music concert, and a lot of great things happening around the district all around. So tonight, I'd like to make right up two representatives from Catholic charities. So as most of you know, for the past year, the board has been discussing some of the financial issues and liability concerns for our childcare program. So just reiterating, the childcare program is an enterprise fund according to the New Jersey Department of Education. What that means is that it's not supported by the district's operational budget. It's a parent support pay model, so parents pay as a business, they pay money for childcare services, we render those childcare services, and as any good business, the revenue should exceed expenditures. Pre-pandemic, there was a surplus, so business was good. Coming into the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic, the surplus depleted heavily due to ongoing issues needing more staffing for student needs, one-to-one student support for parent professionals, students with need medical support and things like that. So we've done a wonderful job of staffing all of the student needs. Going into the pandemic, all of our staff were paid, how many hours they worked during the pandemic without the business being open, so that depleted a lot of the funds. And then coming out of the pandemic, especially last year, we still had to maintain a lot of social distancing and issues, so we had more staffing, so our student staff ratio was different than normal. So there were a myriad of reasons for the fund being depleted, so I know over time we have talked about ways to support the financial needs of that business without obviously having no access. We don't have access to government subsidies as a public school. We also don't have access to loans, so like a small business might go out and get a loan or have access to some of the ESER funds or the government funds for the pandemic. We don't have that. So that coupled with some of the liabilities. So when I took over the business, so to speak, I noticed that there was no administration that oversaw it. So the history of it was part of our community education program, so way back, I think this is circa like 30 years ago, we had a 20-ish, more than, okay, as far as the people here know, 20-plus years ago, it was housed and managed under an administrator in the teen center, I guess it was called the community center. They housed the rec program, the summer rec program, was an in-house summer program, and the childcare program. The summer rec program was outsourced to the borough successfully, and so the borough manages the community summer program. And then at some point, during administration, changed over a couple of superintendents ago and changed over in that area, there was no administration or no administrator, anybody administering the program, and ended up in the superintendent's office with the secretary, who basically did collections and registration and things like that for the program. So when issues arise for the two staff members that oversee the program, they're called site managers, they really, I guess, the amount of funding that goes to the program and their title, they really should be managing the whole program from start to finish, but that's not necessarily what's happening. There still needs some administrative support with some of the issues that we had this year, and lack here concerning inappropriate sort of teacher student backpacks, a lack of training on staff and things like that. It's a different program than during the day program, so I think that's a different misconception that paraprofessionals, for example, that work for us during the day, by the way, not everybody that works the aftercare program does work for the school district during the day. We do have some people that are a member of our staff during the day. The training they get as a paraprofessional and as a secretary isn't the same for running a childcare program. It's called Chapter 52 for the leaders of the Department of Childcare, so we're exempt from licensure, however, we aren't exempt from following our procedures and protocols under Chapter 52. And so part of Chapter 52 does say what a director should do, you should have a director of the program, what the director needs to do, what the site manager should do, the qualifications for all of these things. The last, my notes shared, that's the last, the last time the job description for after school programs that manager was adopted was July 21, 2003. So 20 years ago was the last time this job description was even renewed or looked at or adopted. So things have changed in 20 years when it comes to childcare, and part of it obviously includes, you know, training of staff, but that is not exactly happening. So there's been a lot of concerns for liability and program management, you know, that we have to really consider and look at. So there were a myriad of reasons when this was born met on March 20, and I gave you a presentation, and I said, we have some options. We need some oversight for the program. I need to bring back what the, this job description states that they report to the community programs coordinator. We don't have a community programs coordinator, so right now, who do they report to? The answer is nobody. The two site managers for the program report to nobody. They are the ones that are reporting to, they have to manage the program, they oversee the program, they are in charge of the program. But when they don't know what to do or need assistance, my office is available to help. My business office is available to manage their finances. So we need a little bit more oversight. So it was my recommendation in March that we, and also let's couple that with the fact that rates have not been raised in at least 20 years or to the knowledge of anybody that has been with the program from its inception. And rates have increased, it's been, that everybody gets paid more money, food costs go up, everything goes up. Our rates have not. Over 50% of the people that take advantage of the program qualify for free reduced lunch. At this point, more than 40% of our population in Havel Park qualifies for free reduced lunch. We officially got word that all of the high school and all of our, they are officially Title I, fully funded Title I schools. That makes the entire district eligible to use Title I funds however we want for a house program. That means that more than 40% of our students and families qualify for free reduced lunch. They need access to affordable childcare. But I also need to make sure that childcare is overseen in a strong way and that we have access to resources for our families most in need. So the proposal I presented was that we had to increase rates, so I appointed administrator to oversee this program because there isn't one right now. Those rates were very, very high. Administration is not cheap. You come with a certificate, you have to get paid for that certificate. So the options were increase the rates so that we could do that and keep the program managing as is, or go out for a request for proposals. It's been, for a very long time, we haven't even explored, are there other options out there, are they more affordable, could they provide more resources, could they get government subsidies to help our families most in need of childcare? A committee convened to review those proposals. Now, proposals for proposals can happen in two ways. One is we can take low bid, and so whoever comes up with a low bid wins. Another option is we can do a ranking system or a voting system, a point system. So within my last presentation, at the last meeting, was I showed everybody how we ranked the proposals. So 60% was cost because we knew that was really important to our families, and we heard that loud and clear for everybody. Don't raise our rates, we love how much we pay for childcare. We've heard that loud and clear. So that was 60% of the overall proposal, rumor. 20% was management, because another thing that I expressed very clearly was we need some management oversight of it, and the other 20% was technical, like programming, curriculum instruction. From my perspective, when I sit outside of my office, it's right at Bartol in the backyard, and what I hear all day is a lot of runaround playing, which is great, but no structured activities, a lot of yelling at the kids where they're misbehaving, a lot of screaming yelling. So that sort of technical piece, where is the, where is the activities, where are the fun things, the art of crafts, what are they doing and how are they doing it? So through the process, and by the way, it was myself, Ms. Stevenson, Ms. Sodano, we had two board members, we had a parent, we write to two parents, one was able to attend but wasn't to the RFP process, and we had both site managers as part of the proposal process as well. And so we all reviewed them together, then in isolation, we all voted our own ways in isolation. This board for tally and Catholic charities was our winning proposal. So at the last meeting, I gave some information about Catholic charities. I know it left a lot of people with some questions. I want to thank Catholic charities immensely for replying really quickly to our emails to answer those questions. I found a frequently asked questions document that also contains some answers to some in-house questions, not for Catholic charities. I know that there were still some concerns, so to be able to provide the Board of Education the most information possible tonight, I'm presenting you two representatives from Catholic charities, Dawn and Krista, who are going to come up and answer questions from the Board of Education. So thank you so much, and welcome. Check, check. All right, we're good. If you could just introduce yourselves real quick, maybe speak out your position inside of the program. Thank you.
My name is Krista Lynn, Service Area Director at Catholic Charities, overseeing all of our childcare programs. So we have programs in Warren, Morris, Somerset, and Middlesex counties. I've been with the agency for almost 25 years. You know, I really love my work. I appreciate all the impact that we have on the kids that we serve. We probably serve around 1,500 every year, you know, from preschool all the way up to middle school.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dawn Rainey White, and I am the Director for Childcare Services, and I oversee the Hillsborough School District, and we serve about 550 children every day. I have seven after-school programs, one which have a before and after program, and we really, you know, take pride in the work that we do. We enjoy, I like myself, Krista, I love what we do. And, you know, we come to work, we're happy, and I feel like when you have that type of energy, you give your best after it, and we always try to create a podcast after it behind coffee services.
Thank you. Okay, so do you have anything that you wanted to say, or do you want us to drop in the questions? I might drop in, okay. So I have a word if anybody has any questions that needs clarification.
I'll start.
Don't forget to speak in your language, folks, and the people at home in here.
There've been a lot of questions, clarifications needed about how families who are free reduced lunch, how they would get subsidies, because obviously, as we said, that was a big part of our reason for going out to propose this and so board. So when I read the proposal, it said that typically families who are eligible for free reduced lunch are also eligible for subsidies assistance. I didn't focus on the work at school department, and that has since come up as an extent. So again, my question is, for those who are at free reduced lunch, if you use that expression, how about low incomes, how typically are they automatically, do they easily get subsidies? And how many people, in your experience, have not been able to get that subsidy because they came before time or school full time for various reasons? Definitely been a concern for me, to have that process to work.
Well, I mean, I'd say historically, our subsidy participation has increased over the years. I think even this year, we have a program in Phillipsburg, we have probably almost 30 or more that runs subsidies, so I feel like with some of the relaxing, some of the requirements, a lot of the government, especially Governor Murphy, you know, really continuing to try to support family. Right now, families who are eligible don't even pay a co-pay, and looking to, I don't think has it in this fiscal 2024 budget as well. So I think that, you know, definitely has helped, obviously, so I'm hoping that we'll continue that, but, you know, we do see a good increase in subsidies. So I don't hear too much that there's not a lot of people that qualify, but, you know, we do, we do help, you know, with hardships for other families. You know, we have one that I know is in Hillsborough, is, you know, living in a trailer, and is, you know, driveway is of Ida, you know, his home, that's right from Ida. So we sent our summer program, you know, so we provided him, you know, assistance with childcare. So, you know, we worked through that and some of our other agency services to try to, you know, help for those who don't qualify.
So those who are not working full-time for that initiative, or work full-time whatever, are still getting subsidies for these other programs, in your experience?
Yes, yeah, I mean, for the state subsidy, they do have to meet those requirements. Those are not ones that we come up with, obviously, that's across all the chapter resource referrals, but, you know, I mean, it's 30 hours, so they look at it, they ask you to make your pay stuff for like the past month, so obviously, you know, people's jobs change or they have a job loss, even if they have a child at home, say they just had a baby, you know, they do provide some of those flexibilities for that, so the parent does still pay childcare because they're taking care of a younger one. You know, I think the state's been pretty supportive.
Thank you. So I want to say, first of all, I know, we asked a lot of questions, I don't feel too hostile. I personally, it's really Catholic charities, my work at Evil Services in New Jersey, and I think obviously the agency, the entity does wonderful work, so I hope that we have it coming across as really nice, because, you know, I personally love the respect the work that you do. I did have a question about undocumented families, they're not eligible for the childcare parole service. I mean, how many low-income undocumented families do you have on subsidy now, your, I'm sorry, your hardship subsidy?
Well, yeah, I mean, it doesn't, just because they're undocumented doesn't necessarily mean that they don't qualify. If they do have some type of, if they don't have like an actual pay stub, then the parent can submit a letter for their employer. So we do have, in it runs with, you know, we've done wraparound for our preschool programs at preschool, and a lot of them are undocumented, so they've been able to submit letters because they don't, they, you know, do an actual pay stub, and the CCRNR doesn't accept that, so it's not always, you know, across the board necessarily. They still have to meet the requirements, but they can submit a letter for their employer.
So, I mean, when I looked it up, and I've been looking at the whole document, obviously you're more familiar with than I am, it said that applicants need to be a qualified immigrant, pretend immigrants, a qualified legal immigrant, which typically means an LPR, AHR, registered refugee status, asylum status, people who are, like, clients who are just here. Are you saying they're stable, overlook that requirement and accept the letter from their employer? Okay, so my client's not in luck with that, but, you know, with childcare.
I mean, you know, I don't know if some CCRNRs are strictly, you know, I mean, like, some of them, obviously, they do have certain requirements, so I don't know if it's one that's, you know, county-based, so.
Yeah, sure, Dawn, could you, in your experience in Middlesex County as well, in the way the lawfully, lawfully present.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, probably from what we experienced, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, could I ask, I guess I'm the ladies on the committee for universal access, and particularly we had the issue of children with diabetes type one come up. Right now, the district has deployed someone who can do insulin injections, and again, I think through all your messages, a great responsibility to go questions. You said you don't have anyone that can respond to getting insulin injections. I guess my question is, it seems like we've already been starting out with this agreement about the, in that context. Have you had, you know, it's a very big organization discussion, I've seen from that before, do you share anything about how it's come over the past?
Nothing specific, you're specifically talking about diabetes?
Yes.
And the insulin?
Yes.
Honestly, for Hillsborough, we have not had any of those types of situations, so I really can't do the speed to that, and I think we did respond to it in the, before we asked questions to.
Right, and we have had, you know, we have severe allergies and, I mean, so we do, it's not that we don't take education, there are some programs that will just basically use, but, you know, when you're talking about something that, you know, requires proper disposal, needles and things like that, we just, you know, we're in a share of space. We haven't had this situation come up, and we try to accommodate as much as we can, but, you know, we don't have anybody that's trained to administer that.
But, little disabled, so I think what we could do is work with a camera, define that, or what signs that the child may be displaying, if it's too high or if it's too low, like some of those proactive things that you can do to address things, to make sure that hopefully we don't get to that piece. And then I think honestly, we probably would have to follow, you know, emergency personnel in the event that we see the signs are getting to a point where that child would be, you know, with diabetes in the district, so.
I think you already responded that you need to talk with the family to see whether you can accommodate that, but then, the way that's phrased, it sounds like there's a chance they wouldn't be able to find, is that correct?
Well, I mean, in regards to allergies or any kind of medication thing, yes, I mean, that's what we typically do, we review the enrollment form when they come in, so if there's any kind of, you know, allergy or medical needs, then we do, we have that communication, specifically for, you know, administering insulin injections, you know, we don't.
You, oh, are you not finished?
Please.
Did I get the follow-up, then?
Yes, yes. I forgot it's a report, yes.
Yeah, it's a report, yes, sorry about that. So, you know, one thing, it's like we do not administer insulin, so does that mean that your staff wouldn't be willing to be trained as sort of lay, I mean, there are, I believe there's some people in New Jersey, in fact, they may be required that there has to be someone to manage diabetes care on the premises, right, other than the non-responder? So, like, people can be trained in the administration of insulin and the management of diabetes care plan, is that something that your personnel would be willing to do, or is that no insulin just a policy preference, or, you know, a policy rule?
I would say, you know, I mean, really, it would be more of a policy rule than how our agency, you know, does not feel comfortable in our research.
Okay, I phrase that not a policy rule, a rule.
Yeah.
I'm kidding. How do you, like, they call it wobbly, yeah, okay, so as a rule, your agency does not.
Yeah, I mean, in old videos, you know, we have not had that situation, you know, a lot of different allergies, a lot of different medications, you know, I think we, you know, really try to be as flexible and accommodating as we can, you know, but we want to make sure, you know, we, you know, deliver the proper service and, you know, we have, you know, what needs to be done, so.
So insulin is not a hard stuff. Oops, sorry, insulin is a hard stuff, no, you're right. Okay, thank you, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Are we going to follow the comment after this?
Yeah, so after the question, when there's no more questions to the board, we will level it up to the first public comment, and then we'll be assessed to a different side.
Right, I mean, I guess I would just maybe like to summarize the problem, maybe, what the price situation is, because that was 60% of our evaluation criteria. It really seems like there are 40 in the group of students here. There are a group of children who qualify for free reduced, free, free lunch and would qualify for the subsidy, the state subsidy. Their, their payment for childcare would go to zero, as I understand it. Their payment for childcare would go to zero, as I understand it. There is a group of children who are on reduced lunch and qualified for the state subsidy. They would see a dramatic decrease. I think they would go from a projecting of forty percent discount, so one fifty, is, am I getting that right? And so they would go from one fifty to whatever they pay, well, it'd be, I mean, right now, zero. But it's going to be something small.
Yeah, right now, zero, yeah, I mean, it's usually very low. You know, unfortunately, obviously, depending on, if anyone.
But zero to fifty, something in that range.
Yes.
And then another group of families who are paying full price right now, that they would go to two ninety, something, I don't know the exact number, whatever you bid. Which is an increase overall, we're charging now, but it's less than the increase than what the administration says they're legally obligated to charge families that have a subsidy in the program. And then there's a fourth group of children now are on free reduced lunch by school standards, but would not qualify for the state subsidy because both parents are not working. And we really have no idea, I think, how big that clue is at the moment.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's definitely, you know, obviously, you know, we have to look at that and see, you know, how many we're talking about, but definitely that would be something that, you know, if they do have that hardship, that we would, you know, take those cases, you know, individually. You know, work with them. You know, we pay their plans, you know, we do the hardships, we get a significant, you know, reduced price. You know, we're not looking, you know, to book people out. You know, we want to be able to provide a service, you know, like we're, you know, we're a nonprofit agency. And I mean, you know, this is, this is what we do. So, you know, we're not going to be coming in to look to, you know, outmarket our prices. You know, parents would want to be able to provide, you know, childcare for them. It's so me, you know, so. Especially now, you know, everybody get back to work. You know, we are seeing more and more people, you know, coming back to work and studying the hybrid or the learning from home, so.
Can I just ask to clarify a question? So two years in, the parent pressure, or sorry, the pressure for how much you pay employees. One was like, I said, like, I don't know, was it group leader one and one was number two? So we don't have that here, we basically just have our parents that are the ones that really take care of the children. So how, what determines which, like, hourly rate they would get? Because one of yours is actually more than what we pay our current parents. So I was just wondering if how that's determined, because some of our current employees might want to consider staying, because they all make more money, actually.
Yeah, yeah, and we love that instead. You know, that is, you know, we're not looking to, you know, we want a smooth transition. We're not looking to have a move and change. You know, we want to be able to come visit the programs if we can, to try to see, you know, what they, you know, how they're structured now. But the state supervisor is the one who oversees the program. So they supervise the other staff. You have an assistant who is sort of that backup. And the group leaders can be college kids, high school kids, you know, it can depend. So there are more lower-level staff, I guess you could say. And then our academic coordinators or, you know, real certified teachers or teachers that, you know, are definitely happy to help support the applicants.
Hi, this one. I'm sorry. This question kind of has to do with that one process earlier, but more in general terms of students with disabilities, going to need, running out of R and D. I have to say, the language was a little bit vague in terms of accommodations, not almost. It brings me like, we will accommodate if we can. So how often do you have to have a difficult conversation that your child cannot be accommodated in the program?
So I think, you know, we work with all children, I think that's the first thing. And we will take different steps to make sure that we are addressing a child's needs. So what does that mean? And so we're going to, you know, speak with the parent. We're going to definitely make sure that we are informed about, you know, what is the needs, you know, what works best for the child, what are certain things that we can do to support the child. But we definitely will take the time to get to know and to really get that child accommodated to the program. My staff knows that we just don't stay one and done, like we work with kids. So, for example, in our discipline, what we do is positive, I'm sorry, think sheets. You know, we do a lot of reflection with kids because we want them to be able to be able to understand and to process, you know, what they did and how they can do better going forward. So, you know, if that doesn't work, then it becomes a positive discipline. But we have like a ladder of consequences before we get to that point of saying that this is not a good fit. So I definitely feel like we work with children before we ever say that this is not the right for this child.
So I know current staff can apply for positions. Are they prioritized over other people? Are there any staff from other locations that are already lined up to take positions? If this were approved, all of our staff are.
Yeah, they can definitely be, yes.
Is there anything, you know, if they pass the qualifications that are listed here, is there anything else that potentially is followed by somebody?
No, I mean, we do references, we do obviously all the criminal background checks. No, I mean, if there are any wanting to get a district, I mean, we take that, I guess, as you could say, as a reference. But, no, I mean, we would, you know, whether it's somebody that works in a district or lives in a community, that could be ideal.
Right, we can actually do welcome it because it would help to create seamless transition. So I definitely feel like they would definitely be a priority.
Are the, you know, the hourly rates not listed or is any of that negotiable? And are any of those tiers?
Yeah, they could be, yeah. I mean, we usually do that based on, you know, experience, you know, education. So that's why we sort of have a little bit of a range there, but we do have a little bit of a plus of the needs.
So tuition came in really low. But we're seeing.
Just a little hug. Sorry.
The rates came in, which was one of the reasons it was chosen, since that was sixty percent of the decision. But it looks like the rates are much higher in some of the other districts where you're working. So I'm wondering, is that just for the first year? Do the rates typically increase in one year's time or a certain amount of time? What percentage would they increase historically? Just wondering if it's coming low, but then have the rates in a year or two.
No, I mean, we're not anticipating raising fees. We know, I know there are other providers that typically raise their fees every year. We don't, especially during COVID, you know, we didn't raise fees, even though we had three kids in the program, you know, in different, you know, different areas. We go basically every year, you know, I try to research what the comparable rate is. The rates that we probably see from other programs, you know, that we have, are pretty comparable to what fields charges. You know, everything's expensive in New Jersey. But, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, what we try to do is we try to see, okay, you know, who else is in this area, what are the rates? And, you know, we do that every year, both for our summer programs and our after-school programs. Because we're not looking, you know, to raise them, you know, thirty, forty dollars or whatever every month. Or, I'm sorry, every year. Yeah. Every year, you know, so we do, you know, we do try to be single. I, yeah, I'm a parent too, so, you know, I mean, I, you know, you have to try to see both sides, I guess you could say. You know, it's not just about, you know, raising the standards. It's trying to, you know, keep that happening, you know, to learn more.
Can I ask a follow-up on staff? Sure, thanks. And one thing that's great about, Jerry's a dear nonprofit, right? Which is really nice, so we're not expecting, you know, price gouging and all that kind of stuff. This is also a question about the decosia, I guess, can we have a sense for how many positions there are for staff that are at our parent qualification level? In other words, is this going to be a given, is it a chair for like five staff? Five staff members just numerically won't be able to be employed or set the staff?
I think all of our staff would qualify to be employed with the organization.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was trying to be worded. Do you have any sense of the number of vacancies that there will be? I realize that that will change.
Oh, I have no idea. Okay, I guess it depends on if they, if they want or not. And it has clearly some of them or some of them might want to stay because it's an increase in what they're getting paid. For some of our staff, it might not be, if, you know, they have.
I was just wondering if this question maybe goes to Catholic charities? How many physicians do you have being, is that the question?
No, no, like, basically, like, if we transition now, if I have twenty, even if, I don't. If the program has twenty staff, let's, I don't know, for a numbers sake, right? Twenty staff, how many of them would continue on? I don't, I don't manage a program, so I leave all of them ask.
So I didn't mean how many would want to continue on, I just, doesn't it mean like, would there potentially be like five openings at Catholic charities for staff with parent professional qualifications? And we currently have like seven staff.
Oh, it would be, it would be the same number of staff because they have the same ratio of students to children. Sorry, staff to student ratio, that's in the code in chapter fifty-two.
I see.
So any childcare program provider, whether it's a district model or a childcare model, has to follow the same staff, not all the same staffed ratio, but site is in her, sorry, site supervisor ratio. So there's all the qualifications, qualifications of what it means to be a site supervisor, what it means to be a director, what it means to be a provider. So all of those things under chapter fifty-two of the New Jersey code are all required regardless.
So we anticipate that there'd be a one-to-one match. In theory, if people want the job, that they were qualified, or at least if you have a pending criminal case, they don't know about it.
Well, not more staff, they would.
No, I know, I know, I know. But, I mean, setting aside all the necessary qualifications, there should be a one-to-one match of sort of like street-level, kid-level employees.
Correct, as long as the same number of students.
For three.
Right, right, of course. Thank you.
I think the only thing that's a little bit of a licensing in our licensed childcare centers is for your preschool, you know, because of the hours, we have to have someone that's a qualified preschool teacher, you know, in our program. So a little bit, I think that's a little bit different than when you have.
Correct.
Natural ones.
But we don't.
That's a one-to- twelve, one-to-ten, I'm sure.
Once, we don't have, we don't have, we smoke pre-k, it's a.
They're part of this program, but not as separate. Because they're, usually you're talking about like something that you brought to it, which has, it's, you're running a specific one for the preschool school.
Yeah, but even, you know, in our Long Valley program, we're containing our preschool population. So because of that and because of the hours, because you're more than like a four-hour time span, we have to have someone that is qualified under licensing as a head teacher.
Right, that makes.
So I would, well, because we're COVID out, we're asking, we're moving to the preschool expansion next year for full day. So our numbers might change, we're increasing the number of students for preschool, so all of that might change for us next year, so I don't know that.
We're anticipating opening it from around two, because.
I'm sorry.
Yes, yes. How are you, I think.
Yes, the same.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, just fitting a little bit to the tuition payments and actually the late payments schedule I see here. The state said in the payment fee receipt, there will be a twenty-five-dollar late fee charged to the accountant. Does it say by when? Is there a leave wait period for late payment receipt?
Yeah, it's usually, I think it's after, I'm not the billing person, but I think it was between the fifth and the tenth.
Oh, okay, yes, so also.
It's usually due by like the first, we give a grace period till like the fifth. We have a lot of parents that just sign up for automatic, you know, monthly. But, you know, we do weekly, honestly, I mean, I know there's many situations where parents are going to chat or say, well, I only get paid once a month. So we are probably more than other people flexible, you know, because we know as long as, you know, as long as they, you know, pay, then, you know, we're not slapping that fee on right away. You know, we have that communication with the parent, you know, because that's, some people get paid differently.
Yeah, no, I'm a parent from that, I know that sometimes I'm late and this, forget it's the third, the sixth. But it does say here that nonpayment by the six of the month is retro to a suspension and for termination, which that we had a reason to have about it, so.
I can't, honestly, I mean, I cannot remember the last time we've actually terminated someone for nonpayment. Like I said, we probably are more flexible than, you know, what our policies say, I guess you could say. You know, because each of our billing staff, you know, they work with the parents, they have a lot of communication with them. So they get to know them, you know, pretty personally, I guess you could say, so.
I guess that would be, thank you, thank you so much. But I guess that'd be the same for the late pickup fee of a dollar a minute? How close do you feel to that policy?
That's, I mean, we do provide education, yeah.
So if a parent will call and say, hey, I'm running late, you know, we can work with that, you know, and there's a courtesy. But if you have a parent that's continuously coming late, then we have to start to, you know, buckle down and say, hey, you know, this is going to get late.
Right. And, you know, obviously, we've had times where, you know, the highway's shut down and twenty people can't get there, you know, we're not, we're not, we don't charge people for staying. That's out of your control, you know, but if we do have repeated lateness, you know, yes. Because our staff are staying, you know, some of them have family, you know, other jobs or, you know, other commitments, so. So we try to be fair to the staff too.
I understand, thank you.
And that's why we decided to, you know, we offer, and several of our organs will six thirty, and that's, you know, something that it seemed like was a concern in regards to, you know, late pickups here. So, you know, we extended hours to six thirty.
Also, I want to bring up a decision, so there are the possibilities of having this program, maybe offering the childcare services when school isn't in session. So if we're off on like voter, voter day or a JD convention or something like that, the parents don't have access to childcare? We don't offer that now, so I wanted to verify that that was a possibility.
Yeah, and I did see on the calendar too, that you have some days before holiday breaks that you don't offer it. I mean, we're open, so, you know, the date for, I guess, whatever, you know, the different holidays are. We offer. Thank you.
I noticed that in the admission statement of Catholic charities, you had a statement about certainly all families, races, et cetera. But there were two terms that were left out of the admission statement, that's gender identity and sexual orientation. And we did get confirmation, meaning that you do follow New Jersey state law. But we have a pretty vibrant LGBTQ population here in Highland Park. And I'm curious how you reassure parents that their students are not only included, but affirmed in their gender identity and their status?
I mean, we have had that situation, you know, there's some rules. You know, we follow the school, you know, accommodates. So, you know, we had a one or two students where, you know, they used it, you know, used the identified bathroom. You know, so we, we take that, you know, we really don't, you know, look to treat them differently. Obviously, they're all welcome to be in our program. So whatever accommodations or different things, you know, that either our parents requesting, the students requesting, you know, we take that into account, so.
Have you offered any specific trainings to your staff regarding working with LGBTQ students?
I mean, we do have cultural diversity training. We have a cultural competency plan within the agency. So everyone that's when they're initially hired goes through cultural competence training. I know that we have different staff that, you know, on their own and you can not know what type of department they're in. You know, will take certainly different trainings, so. You know, I mean, but mostly, I would say, probably the cultural competency in our cultural competency plan. Yeah, when joint commission accredited the agency is, even though it's more hospital-based, I guess you could say. But, you know, there's a lot of the, you know, loose ties that require it, so that as well.
I think, you know, at the end of the day, you know, children are children. And we want to just create an inclusive environment for every child. And we're not just going to focus on that particular situation, but just making sure that every child feels welcome when they come to any of our programs and engaged.
So staff are like, are not going to be surprised when you see a trans kid? Do you have a number of trans kids?
No, we've, we've dealt with that situation, we've worked with the principals, you know. Chris has said, we always want to make sure that we're the same, at the school. You know, and also making sure that communication's happening with the families. Like, I think the key thing to anything that we do is really about building relationships and communicating and trying to, you know, just be transparent and making sure everybody's on the same page.
And some, I want the lower-level staff, but some of the child-level staff, not the managers, but the regular, people who are going to do some daily business, which I guess more are people, which would be great. They're, they're moving to the phenomenon of trans children. I mean, I ask this because sometimes you go places and, you know, folks are really surprised and they're like, oh. We don't want our kids, you know, facing a staff member who's like, what? But, okay.
No.
Great, great.
No, we have, we have the huge. No, we have, we have the huge number of staff, I mean, not even, not just within the agency, but, you know, within our childcare programs, yeah, yes.
Thank you so much. Oh, sorry, on that a little bit, because you're mentioning, um, children and students, but the same applies to staff as well.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, that is my report.
Thank you very much. Um, we are going to move to public comment, um. What's that? Um, before the public comment, I just want to lay the comment myself, and then I'll read the statement. Um, obviously, there's a lot of strong interest in this particular topic of our, I'm just hoping to maybe people who are here for our topics as well. Currently, we have seventy-two people online in the room here, I don't know, twenty, I can't, but a lot of people, and we're very happy you're all here and happy that you're, um, truly are, I know it's stressful, but I, I appreciate the interest and concern for our district. Um, we tip, this is the comment period where our speakers have three minutes, and we usually stop at the end thirty minutes. We're going to go to forty-five minutes in the interest of time, because we need to go to the executive session and come back, and, and there's still a whole agenda to do. So just want to lay that out, if we have another public comment period at the end, if you want to talk about a topic, uh, other than the after-school program, you might want to think for that, and that more time of focus, that's obviously a choice, not, not requiring it, just suggesting it. Um, and, and just to remind people that the more we listen to what public comments we made, I can pause you and others take notes, we don't typically respond, but we won tonight because this takes that much more time and gets more complicated. We want to hear what you have to say, and, um, if there's a question in it, I can pause you may respond with an email, um, as we show up in those after meetings. Uh, so that's been our format, that's what we're going to say with tonight. And, well, if you can comment here. The Catholic Party Board of Education welcomes public, wants to be published in public and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies O-164 and O-167 establish and regulate the requirement of everything public meetings. Um, so typically what we do is we, um, have people in the room have first opportunity to speak, so you raise your hand, um, and then when you go to the, uh, the right there to state your name, uh, do this find you here?
Yeah, so I can stop, name and address, unless you're a student, they do need to be.
Okay, and then we'll go, name and address, yeah, and then we'll go to the people online and say, they can raise your hand, you can ask your name and address. Okay, anybody in the room want to speak? Um, but I just, the mic.
Can I just find this a little awkward part?
Yeah.
Um, my name is Kristen Springer, I live at 23 Denison Street. Um, I'm a parent of two children in the district, both who, uh, were enrolled in the after-school program every single year at Irving Bartle, and I'm here today as a concerned parent with over a decade of experience in after-school programs, um, and a hard employee to keep the after-school programs in-house with the staff, the teachers, that our children, all of us, know and love, who have been with our children and nurtured our children and care for our children and taken care of our children, raised our children and taught our children for decades. Nothing can replace that. Um, however, I'm not just here as a concerned parent. I'm also here to present a letter to the board that opposing outsourcing our after-school programs signed by more than a hundred community members, a hundred community members. So community members like us, and most importantly, our children, are directly affected by your decisions, and we have a right to be heard and to be listened to. These are our kids after all. I won't read the whole letter, but in short, the large number of community members who sign this that are asking about no to privatizing our after-school program, and instead bolster and invest in the community members and teachers that have helped raise our children. I can't go on enough about that. We, uh, there, there's no, no replacing the people who know and love our children. Um, we have many concerns, but I'll lay this on two main ones in these three minutes. First, the board has provided no evidence base for logical reasons for outsourcing. For example, Dr. Nicosia, if your part of that staff have not been properly trained, it's the case, why don't we train them? We are a school, we are a school district, we can train them. Um, there were students all day, right? I know you said earlier that's a different kind of training, but if we're concerned about their ability to be with students, why are we allowing them to be with students for much of the day? Um, Dr. Nicosia also reported the main reason for Catholic Charities is that it was less expensive, but we have asked repeatedly for specific information showing how they are less expensive, how does it actually compare dollar for dollar to our after-school program? If we were to bolster our after-school program, we have yet to receive that information. Even in this meeting, it's clear that we don't want to manage, people are getting paid. Um, also questions about supervision, that we need more supervision. Fine, great, why can't we do that in-house? We have yet to provide information about why we can't have sufficient supervision in-house to keep the faculty and the staff that we love. Um, second, we're shocked by the choice of Catholic Charities. Catholic Charities holds strong positions that are fundamentally in opposition to what our community and home, their board of ed in District Code Dear, like the beautiful flags displayed here.
Thirty seconds.
Including LGBTQ rights and access to fundamental healthcare. And responses to questions saying like, we're in line for the schools, we'll do whatever the school tells us to do, it's not affirming. That's loudly clear to the kids that they're just kind of being treated like they have to be, probably not like loving the children that they are. I know I'm out of time, that's clear, but again, on behalf of more than a hundred community members, I ask you to vote no on outsourcing and instead invest in our community, in our teachers, in our parents, with the staff that love to care for our children for years and years.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Francisco Malanaro, I live at 117 Donaldson, um, and I am also a parent of children, um, that have attended the after-school program. My oldest is in Gauki, uh, did three years in the program of Bartle, uh, Irving, he's now the program of Bartle, he's on seventy, is his second year at the Irving program, where they have received, I think, wonderful care, that I think has been largely in part because the system, because the program is administered by teachers that they know and have relationships with the teachers that teach them during the day. When there is an issue, uh, that they've had, and they've both had issues, uh, in the program, we have been able to approach, particularly Ms. Carla, uh, and it's been a pretty seamless, um, transition in terms of coordinating a response to it between the after-school provider and the teachers, and the problems have always been resolved, uh, the response, this has been great. Um, I want to thank the people from Catholic Charities who are here, I'm sure you do guys, uh, great work. This is not about any particular person that might get a contract, um, I just feel strongly that the students are better served with the district running this in-house to the extent that job descriptions, uh, funding rates and training modules have to be updated. I think we should absolutely do that, I think it should be the district that does that, and to the extent that there is a funding shortfall due to what was paid during, um, COVID, I believe that the, um, program might be eligible for, um, participation in the employee retention credit that the Fed's ruled out as part of the COVID recovery methods. School districts are not eligible for that program, not since this is an enterprise and a business that has grown sort of, um, junction within this, it is worth examining the eligibility for the, to make a funding shortfall. Um, I'll see you the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Somebody's standing there, wants to speak? Is this one? Anybody would bother from the line, just go, thank you, we can go.
Um, my name is Elizabeth Fong Taylor, I live at 60 North 7th Avenue. Um, I'm really committed to ask the representatives from Catholic Charities any questions. Okay, well, if I could ask questions, I'd ask them to define what insulin is, I'd ask them to define what OOD is, I'd ask them to define what test groups are, what the CGM is, but I can't ask them to question. So I'm a parent of a student with type one diabetes who has been in this district since he was enrolled in special education 3K. Ms. Carla treated him like family from the start and really helped raise him. But I can go on about the emotional impact of what it is like to hear that your child would likely be discriminated against by an organization that this board of education is considering contracting with, but I will not. Instead, I will focus on the law, and I will focus on the financial damages that organizations like Catholic Charities will try to pay because they have violated the law. The Americans with Disabilities Act requires that daycare provide, that daycares like Catholic Charities provide reasonable accommodations to children like my son with type one diabetes. That includes training childcare staff to assist with routine diabetes care tasks and the administration of insulin by hand, syringe, or pump. We heard today saying that they violate that law. The Catholic Charities policy on diabetes care blatantly violates the ADA. They exclude all children with type one diabetes who are on injections and cannot self-administer. For children like my son, who is on a CGM and an insulin pump, or for children who are on injections and can self-administer, it appears we will have to veto the program where we are allowed to enroll, a burden not based on families who do not have type one. At that time, the program may decide to deny us admission. This is not my opinion. This is the position of the U.S. Department of Justice that they violate the Americans with Disabilities Act. The U.S. Department of Justice Civil Rights Division has successfully challenged daycare policies which are similar or identical to Catholic Charities policy. In one settlement, Kindergart paid damages in the amount of $8,000 per impacted family. In another case, Little Lions Science Learning Academy agreed to pay $25,000 in compensatory damages to the child and her parents, and an additional $2,500 in civil penalties. As you are aware, my child has type one diabetes and uses the after-school program at Bartle. He's been in after-school since he began kindergarten at Irving. On March 20th, when I learned that the administration might consider privatizing our program, I emailed the board and Dr. Nicosia about my concerns. I asked, what protections will be put in place to guarantee the school advised by the ADA and provides accommodations? Dr. Nicosia reassured me that children like my son would still be welcome. She wrote, it's important that we offer a program that meets the needs of the students and families, will also ensure everyone's safety. We can certainly include in our RFP that we would let staff trained on diabetes and also that we have nurse on staff. So you can imagine my disappointment and surprise when I learned on Friday that Catholic Charities has a diabetes policy that is discriminatory and illegal. It's not too late. I am asking you again to please vote no on outsourcing and to keep our programs in-house where my child and any other child with type one can safely attend. Okay?
Laura Wallach, 148 Woolsey. I'm also here to speak against outsourcing the after-school program. Our current after-school program is excellent, run by highly qualified staff who are devoted to our children and who love their jobs. My son is in 3K at Irving and has been in the after-school program since September. We fully trust the staff, as most of them also work at Irving, and see them throughout the day, as do parents in other 3K classes and other classes at school. My son enjoys the program, um, and Ms. Carla has been incredibly responsive to any and all of our questions or concerns, um, as my son transitioned to the after-school program. Anytime I contacted her with a question or concern, she would not only respond immediately and thoroughly, but would also reach out to my son's teachers, the school counselor, and the after-school program staff to make sure any concerns were addressed in school as well as in the after-school program. This would not be possible without this program, and this is really important to us, as it was the first time my son was in any other school situation. It's still not clear to me why we're even considering outsourcing the after-school program, when every single parent I know who has a child in the Irving program loves it and supports it completely. Budget was mentioned as a concern, but it was also mentioned that the after-school program had a surplus prior to the pandemic, so why couldn't the current program not have a surplus again once, since the pandemic has ended, or, and, um, especially if fees are being more increased anyways? I also request that before voting on whether or not to outsource the after-school program, uh, Dr. Nicosia invites the current after-school program leaders to present their program at a board meeting, as she did with Catholic Charities. And then she sent out a thank you filled out by Ms. Carla about their program to the community, again, as was that with Catholic Charities. Please show Ms. Carla, uh, who has devoted decades to this program, the same respect that you're showing Catholic Charities by allowing them to present their program to the community and to the board. Board members and selected officials, please remember who you are representing before placing your vote tonight, what do your constituents want, and what is best for them and for our community? Thank you.
Some of you in here may already know me, but for those of you who don't, my name is John Turner, and I live on 529 O'Nus Street, and I have been included in Marble School way back in 1993, and I have graduated from Highland Park High School more than 21 years ago. And currently, I work on the after-school programs, and I have done so for the past fourteen years. And this job has changed me in more ways than one. It's made me realize that children are really, really special, and it's not just one group of kids. All the kids that I have seen and worked with over the years, they're all remarkable people, and it doesn't matter who they are or where they're from, African-American, Asian, Latino, yes, even LGBT Jew. Every single one of those kids are very special in their own way. So when I heard about the credentials of Catholic Charities and how they were supposedly against people who are mean, I was pretty appalled by that, because I personally believe that Highland Park has always prided itself on being a very inclusive community, and to me, selling out our after-school program and before-school program to an organization that really has not given an incredible or coherent answer as to what they would do, it just doesn't feel very right to me. I personally believe, as somebody who believes in including, that Highland Park should be ultimately about involving people from countries all over. After-school program needs to stay as is. It doesn't belong to anybody except the community of Highland Park, and what are we? We are a community of including people from different cultures. We are supposed to be open and caring and sympathetic, and every day that I am on that job, I assure you that I have tried to do nothing but be just that, the occasional difficulty notwithstanding. But in any rate, I absolutely oppose this, this outsourcing decision. I always have since being one, and I have written a letter which stated my opposition about it on account of my boss. And if it's not enough to, um, to convince anybody to change their mind, I'm hoping that at least my being here tonight will convince them to do that, because I would be incredibly disappointed to see our public school systems take a big step backwards and start becoming an excluding community instead of an including community. That's not who we are, women. We are a town that prides in including people of all different kinds, and it doesn't matter where or who they're from. They need help, all of them, whatever difficulties we may have had this year. There are always solutions to problems, and outsourcing is not the answer. Training more people, absolutely. We definitely need a lot more help in the program. Do we need people to be educated on people with special matters? Absolutely. Let's do that. Why would you ever want to throw that all away for all the million, all the people who have worked here for so many years and continue to do so? So my honest opinion is no to this outsourcing thing. Keep after-school program as is. As somebody who is speaking for all my colleagues and friends and the kids I work with at the program, I say vote no on this full outsourcing thing.
Thank you.
I'm in school in 4th and 3rd Harrison, um, so a lot of parents and teenagers are talking very eloquently about various things, and I have a question about the process. So I was honestly really surprised, given how important cost is as a criteria, maybe 60%. Um, I guess I was surprised to hear, maybe I misunderstood, that there isn't some sort of five or 10-year contract to lock in these lower rates. If cost is so. If cost is so important, is that seems to be something that the board would want to pursue. I understand that there is, I'm sure there isn't any, you know, plans to sort of lowball initially and raise rates, but I would think, again, if cost is this really important criteria and the board want to protect the district against the possibility that happening or happened to happen, if, you know, expenses for the program get raised, if, you know, if, you know, if things happen and suddenly the rates charged by Catholic Charities get hiked to the rates being quoted by other organizations, is the board protected against that? I don't think that's true. And I was surprised that there was less follow-up on that very topic. I think there should also be some clarification, again, as to why the rates going around the park are so much lower than the local communities. Highland Park is in the building for income or not, particularly poor community. It didn't seem to me that the rate should be sort of similar to other middle working class communities where Catholic Charities works, but they're not. I don't understand why that would be. I really don't. I'd also like to understand more about why Catholic Charities are able to offer rates that are so much lower at this point. Are they paying their employees differently than other organizations? Do they have different kinds of trainings, local cost trainings? Are they being supported by other entities that are allowing them to offer these lower rates? I think that there's a lot of being, you know, smuggled in here with this cost criteria that's not been promptly investigated and concerned with the board's and the district's financial exposure. I'm concerned that in two or three years, if the cost does go up, we're back here having to look for different organizations again. Why not do some more exploration now and, you know, perhaps double play?
Thank you. Thank you. (applause)
Nicole Staniel, I have related to all eight more third hour. I also wanted to speak about outsourcing of the after-school program. I'm not going to reiterate what everybody has said. Everybody has brought up a lot of good points here. All I want to do is let my voice also to this argument. As board members, you are making decisions for families that are going, that are going to be directly affected. And they have, not only families, but the staff as well. And they have come to you via email or person right now in many different forms, signing petitions. There has been a lot of outspokenness about this outsourcing. And I think that when you make a decision, you need to really take that into consideration, that if people are really coming out in person, okay, to speak against this, it really needs to be a part of your decision-making process and hearing the voices that are coming out and telling you, "We don't want this. We want our after-school program in-house." Thank you.
(applause) Good evening. My name is Jeff Coleman from 116 North Third Avenue. I have been a parent of two kids, gone through, one's in Irving Aftercare and one is in Bardell Aftercare, that went through the Irving Aftercare system. And both my kids love, love the Aftercare program. And they love Carla, they love the people at Bardell. And I am also here to speak about, to voice my opposition to the potential of outsourcing or privatizing the Aftercare program. I've had my career, about over 14 years of experience of hiring contractors in my job. I write RFPs, I receive proposals, and I support them. In the 14 years when I decided, when I've decided that I needed to consult contractors, you have to figure out what you're doing and why you want to do. If I have staff who need training, I don't go hire another staff, I get the training. When I have staff that need additional management and support, I don't outsource that, I hire someone and help them. And I think that the decision to, you know, procure contact services was ill-advised. It shows in the priorities in the RFP and such as, for example, is the cost. It is telling that cost is 60% of the scoring proposal, whereas management and quality of the programs, which is the reason why I had to go out there in the first place, combined is only 40%. That tells you something. Even within the 60% of the cost proposal, there's two scoring criteria. The Dr. Nicosia only mentioned the cost of payments. The other part is money to the district. That's another, some part of that 60%. You don't know how much, but it's clear in the proposal received from, you know, from Catholic Charities, that they're giving the district some money. And one has to wonder whether that is a big motivator in this area. It's clear in the proposal though, that the cost of the program is not fair. The board had questions, I had questions when I read the proposal, members of the public have, you know, parents, other parents have questions. It's pretty clear on the merits, the proposal is lacking. It's lacking in clarity of the cost. I'll give you one example and then I'll wrap it up. It talks about the cost of $293 a month. It also says though, it does not include enrichment, after, after field trips and other activities. And then you look at a typical day in the proposal and it has enrichment activities and there's no cost of slow-stating with those enrichment activities, other activities. So I don't know as a parent, how much I'm actually going to be paying. Could be $293, $333, $400, no idea. So again, I'll reiterate that I want to post this house posting privatization and ask you to vote no. Thank you.
We're going to take two more speakers once in the room here and then I'm going to give two people more online opportunity. And then we need the board to wrap up the interview. So with their time after that, I expect that to end now. Again, sorry to have everybody shy. But I'm going to make it.
Hi. My name is Jayce Coleman, 12th Ward, East Avenue. I have a daughter in my after-school program in Irving, so I'm going to assume. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you speak with like a polite accent?
Sure. I guess a couple of things. My primary interest in whatever happens to after-school programs, it's not going to be a different than my daughters. In that context, I would like to hear more from the thoughts of the staff and whether there's been a lot of need about how they will position the activity and the payment may be compelling. I would like to hear from the staff as to what their intentions are if this is, if we're looking at Catholic Charities. Also, yeah, I would like to hear that proposals to be something else and that you're not supporting this. Yeah, I'm glad if cost is driving the goal here since it was a 30%. I'd be interested in what the difference is between keeping it in-house and going outside of here if there's a, you know, 10% rise, 30% rise in quality.
No, I'm so sorry, we can't hear you. I apologize.
I was curious about the cost differential between both alternatives in not a percentage basis, but in a total basis. And then finally, there seems to be a lot of motivation to move forward with Catholic Charities, which is certainly within your purview. It's a large change to a program that is quite old. Given the change, I'd like to know what, by what criteria would be judged as a success and what opportunities it will be course correct if we are having this conversation here about how tragically we feel this is going. And that's, I know this is a question, it's a session, so I look forward to discussing my data.
Thank you.
And I would love for you to vote no, but that's all.
Thank you. (applause)
Can I repeat my name, please? Hi, Abby Sturckardl, Highland Park, First Street. I have two children who will be at Irving next year. And I want to start my emphasizing of you all that when this was first, aftercare was first discussed, the overriding message that you heard was cost. And I completely understand that the response to that was to put a high value in cost because that's what you thought the community wanted. And I think that is still what the community wants to an extent, but it is a balancing act. And looking at cost, I wanted to make a couple of points. I did email you all, but I just wanted to give a little bit more in person. So in terms of the cost of the program, I did mention that it had a good deal of surplus prior to the pandemic, which is amazing. But if you look at the fact that you were able to pay all staff during the pandemic, which again, bravo to you for doing that. I believe someone else had said, that indicates a success in the business aspect of the program, if that's the way you're looking at it. And it also indicates that it can be built up again at the existing cost. However, I do think there's need to increase the cost. I don't know that keeping it in-house, it needs to be 30%. I did see an in-house proposal that I believe listed 17%. I don't know how accurate that is. That's actually quite, I'm sorry. That's why it's similar to, I'm sorry, I don't know what time. But somewhere on my needs to be. There we are. All right, go ahead. Okay, so the 17%, again, I apologize if that's wrong, but it's something that I saw that the in-house was proposing. That's quite similar to the 16% that is, oh, I hope I can have a little bit more time from that technical issue. That's quite similar to the 16% that Catholic Charities is proposing. Again, I think that it's reasonable to increase, especially given the fact that there are special considerations for the free and reduced lunch families, as there should be. I also did email you that I looked at the Catholic Charities programs at the schools that they currently have, all of them. Every single one that I saw was listed at $335 to $340 for five days a week for aftercare, which is what I'm looking at as kind of the most common standard, not $293. Now, I understand that they're saying, "Oh, we won't necessarily raise this." I understand that. However, we don't have it guaranteed. Again, it's not in writing. And it really wouldn't make sense for them to charge us a lot less than they're charging everyone else. I don't understand, I don't know why that came in so low, but it doesn't seem to make sense if we're using, you know, math logic that they would think that it's okay to charge us so much less than every other school that they're serving. So I don't feel comfortable with saying, "Oh, and that's 35% finally." Sorry, I was trying to tell you a little more because of the technical difficulties, but I was stopped. Thank you.
(applause) I'm going to give two people online, who need to speak, who have to stop in there. We will have a couple of time at the end. We can, we can leave in two seconds. The first person I could see was Sarah, I'm sorry, please, they have to say.
Hi, Sarah Pixley, now three grand. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Really appreciate the board's time and, you know, honestly, the thoughtful attention to our questions and concerns. And, you know, of course, we know there's lots of things we can talk about, but I want to focus obviously on the issue of the after-school program and really centering around this recurring theme that is just really concerning me and I hope it does everyone, you know, on the board as well, which is just the process that's employed against to where we are right now. So when we look back at some of the numbers, it does appear like a false sense of urgency was created to actually begin looking to collect the RFPs to outsource the program to begin with, which was also communicated publicly as a non-binding exploration. So that's, you know, maybe let's go forward and look. I'll send some points and follow-up, but with the document supporting documentation. But one, you know, that was already brought up really eloquently by Abby, thank you, who does the stable business part, said in March 20th and again today, after-school program, more finances were under red and said today that it was because of one-to-one needs, but it's just not true. It was depleted because workers were paid during the pandemic and when they weren't collecting money from families, which again is great. And I would say after continuing to pay as, you know, the workers during COVID, and we know from the RFPs that it still was profitable, it's just absolutely remarkable. And I would say Ms. Carla and Ms. Jackie are great business owners and, you know, I might hire them on the side. They're fantastic for being able to do that. I would have never imagined that even possible, actually. So for the police calls, we were told on March 20th, by Dr. Nicosia, that children were being left until seven, staff was called to police, Dr. Coleman asked, you know, for data and it was stated that, happened a lot. And at that time, the police had not been called at all, that happened a year and there is evidence of this only happening once, you know, based on work class or public information. So I'm really concerned about these facts. There's also stated there's no repercussions for late pickup. We were told that there wasn't a mechanism to charge parents when they pick their children up late. That's just not true. And then finally, the RFP legal obligation. So the BBLU was told that the RFP process would be non-binding when exploring options and now we're being told that because we explore these options, you know, it seems to be a false pretense that that's actually justification for why we have to go with Catholic Charities because it's now legally binding. So it's all a little concerning and, you know, taken together, I think the board and the calls for transparency, we're really asking, you know, to step back with the process, similar with the early start times. You know, we really want to continue the dialogue and work with you all and I'm eager to do that. And I think if we can do that, if you vote no, with the urgency, I don't know that the urgency really exists to begin with, I think it would give folks in the room a lot of confidence moving forward and, you know, we just need that. We need, you're our partners and you're our voice and, you know, we look forward to continuing the dialogue and getting facts that are based in real information. So thanks so much.
Thank you. And we, we got one more speaker. (applause) We have one more speaker before we recess to back this session. I have a board that I need to speak.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you. Andrew Alexander, 116 North Third Avenue. I know you've a very difficult decision and I know, I appreciate that you're taking the time to listen to the public comments and I hope that you really hear what we're all saying. I have a child who's been in the Irving After School Program, I have a child in the Bardell After School Program. And like many people before me, I'm just here to say that I'm hoping that you'll reconsider outsourcing the program and work to address any deficiencies or any issues that you've been having with the program. You know, I think I've heard since this discussion has started that, is that, you know, within the last year, there were problems in the after-school program. And if that's the case, and this hasn't been going on for five years and it hasn't been going on for 10 years, you know, it's not, we're not saying we don't have a program that's never worked. We're saying, you know, in the last year, we've run into some issues. I'm hoping that instead of sort of throwing out vaguely the bathwater, that we can just say, "Well, it's been a year, let's, you know, look at what the issues are and figure out what we can address in-house." I can't say enough about the teachers. When I asked my daughter what she looks forward to at after-school, she told me today she looks forward to playing with the teachers. That's who she wants to see and play with at after-school. You know, Mr. Turner spoke, I just, he is so great with the children, I can't say enough about him. I know we're being told that the existing staff will get hired by Catholic Charities or have right of refusal, but it doesn't seem like their jobs are guaranteed. These are members of our community, where our children know, and I'm hoping that our children can keep, they can keep working with our children. My other concern about Catholic Charities is I feel that we don't know the actual cost of the program. I was reviewing the application again tonight, it came to my attention that the application clearly states that their enrichment activities and field trips are not included in tuition. And then when you look at page 52 of the proposal, it gives a sample of their daily activities and there is enrichment programs every single day. So it makes me think that in addition to the, was it $293 or whatever we're being quoted for five-day care, that there's an additional fee that we don't know, so we can't plan for what our expenses are going to be, just to have our children participate in the activities. And it doesn't even, it doesn't say that there's an option if they're not doing enrichment, they'll do X. It just says, you know, according to the app, there are enrichment programs. So I'm hoping that the board will reconsider outsourcing, will look at investing in its own program and, you know, will think twice about this because we don't actually know the cost to families. So that's what I want to say. Thank you very, very much for listening.
(applause)
I just want to make one comment, the ads public comments for this round, is that we do consider all your comments. We take them very seriously. We let them see emails, words, and persons. It's not, it's not taken lightly. It's not a decision that we make lightly. We do make the decision on behalf of all families in the district. So we have families participating in meetings and that's awesome, but we're also responsible for considering the needs of all the families in the district. So I want to make that as something that we think about as we make these decisions. It's not, we're not hearing what you're saying, it's that we also have other families who know about. And at that, I'm ready to move that we recess. I move that we recess to executive. I move that we recess to executive session. Been resolved for Simontive Science 9 MJ SA 10 code, Boarding Act 12 and 13. The Highland Park Organization will now meet in closed session to discuss matters related to legal issue and potential rebase. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session and accordance within the S A 10 code for the next week. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be explicitly proposed with public as a basis of making confidence now and no longer with this. So now it's, I think we're recessed.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I move that we convene the board for session, for second.
Second. Who voted for second, sorry?
I was second.
Sorry, it's a big one.
I was next.
We checked the else. So regarding some change to the agenda or in the wording of number 11, item into the board education, separate regulation of the superintendent to reject all the current bill, all the dis, received by the board, is one, that would not have RFP number 22 to 23 CC.
Who was that, Ms. Sanders? Okay. Uh, it will fall. Okay, oh. All right, Ms. Cisaldon.
Yes.
I guess it's a lie. Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Galvin.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Ms. Bruce.
Yes.
Ms. Roslevich.
Yes.
Ms. Wardyce.
Yes.
Mr. Mover.
Yes.
So my sense to you public who are here and online is that we heard you allow it clear. We're going to explore the concept of pursuing keeping this program in-house. We appreciate everyone's passion for the program. So at the present time, we're not awarded, as we disclosed, anybody's bid for our before after-school program. We spent our time inside talking about public versus private, which is what we needed to deal with the, our lawyer. And we too are going to pursue the concept of keeping this in-house. But I do want to say, both to the public here and to the people online, that the original reasons that we need, that we went this far still exists, right? So we still need to deal with the economic, the business realities of running the business that safely and, hopefully safely takes care of our children and takes care of parents' needs that have childcare, so they can keep working. We are doing this, however, now under a time constraint, right? So it is complicated. We're asking Dr. Nikosia to do quite a bit now to try to pull together a posting for director and hiring and revision of lots of issues related to our childcare program. It is likely, if we can pull this off, if the posting can pull this off, the program will look different than it is today, right? So that's the outlook in terms of costs, in terms of salaries, in terms of what we have issues, hopefully in terms of the program as well, additional program. As we do, the board, and I really truly believe this, we always really do our best for the kids in town, right, for our children, both during school day and now in trying to maintain, trying to provide a, again, safe and a good program for our children before and after school. So that's where we are. Stay tuned. There may be special meetings. There may be a special meeting if we get to important hiring and other things, because obviously we're running short on time. We need to put out the parents, what the cost will be, and that's all we'll take a little while, or then we would have, you know, the former system. So with that said, we're going to move to committee reports, reviewing the agenda items for the 12th of June, which is next week. If we don't move quickly, we'll speak here. So let's move it on. Curriculum instruction.
There is no curriculum instruction report tonight. We are leaving tomorrow. There's number two, the UCA's resolution to improve field trip. It's attached. Number three is the resolution to improve the evaluation instruments for the 23, 24 school year. Number four is to improve home instruction for four students.
Like that. I have any next ones? One evening after report.
Yes, it will have been on day 18. That was not present, so maybe in news that is Cisaldon took that time, we'll try to make this agree. He's a very intelligent man. First, they discussed eighteen honors cohort accessibility, update on the SACA that due to vacancies need to be filled. In Navtech in particular, adjustment to the number of friends needed for graduation and, you know, kind of classes, or class, I should say, classes that not yet have been scheduled for 23, 24. Student programs are still a bit progress. Since students do not have programs and not yet know how many students will be enrolled in the AP or other courses. Let's see. Because the high schools have delayed the program, it's not possible to program summer honors AP support cohort this year. However, key back from last year, some of our cohort advisors was to focus on support during the year instead of the summer, as they found it difficult to recruit students for the summer program. Providing the program during the year was also allow for the advisors to better align supports to content areas. They also talked about physical registration data, just an update there. The 100 students, 19% students, obviously, who have already registered, is that, okay, so the 100 students who have already registered, 19% are free and use lunch and are SNAP. Racial and ethnic background percentages, they'll need to be calculated, but the population will stay first. There are 37 students on the waitlist, and of those 37 to 29 are registered prior to the deadline, and the random assigned numbers on the waitlist. There are seven late registrants to date, and they are also on the waitlist. Students qualifying for free and use lunch or SNAP will not be prioritized if registered past the deadline. This is the data reports. The discussion there was really around how reports can be utilized by school administration to take proactive measures next school year. Again, it has to address discipline disparities. And one of the examples they discussed was in assigning mentors to students who have had increased occurrences this year, being mindful of times during the year when these occurrences spike, and looking at what interventions helped reduce occurrences more quickly in prior years. Professional development, ongoing for restorative and responsive practices. There were sessions last summer and through this summer. Todd Bruston will be conducting responsive classroom professional development for middle school staff, on implementing responsive classroom strategies in art, music, and face ed. Four middle school staff members will be attending IR, IR, RFP training this spring. In addition, the spring teacher leader training will focus on building relationships. And this summer, about 18 staff members will attend a four-day course on responsive classrooms. And that's advanced course for MS advisory course. Also talked about middle school social events and exclusion, concerns around exclusion. The committee discussed parent concerns about the middle school procedure of excluding students for trips at social events due to grades. The committee also presented concerns about the punitive nature of this procedure as it did not align with the district's mission's core goals, mission core goals. Dr. Nikosia reported that a meeting with the concerned parent and middle school leadership has helped, and the procedure has been since adjusted so that grades were not a factor in exclusion from school cuts. A letter addressing the change was sent to middle school parents. Policy lists we have are just, I think these are abolished policies, or see, we talked about before. Okay, so policy 9100, all public relations, these duly abolished, and policy R940, citizens advise a great community. And these are just policies that were in line to be abolished, not due to a need that they're being replaced or anything to that effect. Okay. Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. Fire in facilities.
Okay, so we led a nice day to discuss the ASP issue, the days of dialogue proposal, and the sidebar for the INI ESI and home construction pipeline. Items two and three, we're going to discuss more. Dr. Jim Nikosia kept us updated with the options for developing space with the middle school prepaid. And still, options, but how to build necessary space. Is the prepaid going to be in, in Hinton Park? Are we going to keep Kate and Irving in the bring over? Those are all options that are mainly discussed. We had a discussion with Smolva, who's about how to lower the healthcare costs outside the state program, which has been fighting for it, with a success program. But I'm honest that I have a hard time understanding everything about your programs. Congratulations. Anyway, and this was Linda's last meeting as FNF advisor, and unfortunately, she's nine years old, so we can't, congratulations.
We're nice.
Okay, I'll try to talk to you more into the microphone. So one last again, this was Linda's last meeting as FNF, as business manager, and then confirm, then confirm last board meeting. So then, as far as the agenda goes. One is the, the board just gave free travel reimbursement and contractors for professional services, Hackett, Saccharian, Harvard, Ken, and Heda, and so on. County Care Union, county services, special tuition fees. The number four, budget transfers. And five, also set accounts. Six, extraordinary rates. Seven. Seven, the subments for Title 1, 2, 3, 4, i.e. the resolution for the home books that we discussed previously. A nine is the lease requirement, lease agreement for the purchase of 4.23%. Ten, the school breakfast prices, also eleven. Twelve, the approval of asset construction. Fifteen, an out-of-district placement. Fourteen is the ready resolution of the settlement judgment from Mr. Kovak. I have a little description of that. So this is, Mr. Kovak has been a frequent visitor in their meeting, now speaking about the dangers of critical race theory and so on. He had a request for council fees, amount of $16,897 and cost of $381.39. These were awarded because the district was unable to provide all of the requested documents, give extensive requests to the Open Public Records Act. The district produced over 11,000 pages of proposals and emails, but the timeframe is set by the Over Act and was unable to fulfill that request. I think I've read from another board member that the more details about the settlement judgment are available online, if people want to read about that. Going back to the agenda. Fifteen is the approval of a donation from the HS class of 1872. Congratulations. Thank you very much. And sixteen is the memorandum of understanding of my clear for the purpose of internal and external purposes. Any, any questions?
Number fourteen, is that the Mr. Kovak? So we, just to, no, my understanding is we did not settle that here, correct? The judge ordered us to pay that amount.
Correct. It's called the settlement judgment for legal cases.
I see. So I just know the public, we didn't have a settlement case.
And I would add that the 11,000 pages that were produced for Mr. Kovak under the Open Public Records Act was a small amount percent of what was originally requested.
This is all available in public records under J. Korz and elsewhere.
Right, you can look it up. But it was over $16,000 in cost to our children.
Okay, any other questions on finance and facilities? Much of the press. Well, we want to close now, although I guess that is very.
Fortunately, it is supposedly self-explanatory, and since everybody has an access to the agenda, I'm not going to read everything. We got on page 24, that's a committee, goes out by report. In addition to the agenda items, there are a couple of confidential errors, which as usual, are not going to be built over. We talked a bit about the funding for and the functions of the proposed assistant principal at Pardo. I was a little confused, and I apologize for the confusion. Evidence in my notes, but that position has been posted as on Apple track. Okay, moving on to the agenda. Don't think there's anything not self-explanatory. It's very long, because we have a lot of staff appointments, including all of our scheduled B appointments, which is number, number, number 36. So there's all our school activities that have paid staff, summer school, I can, okay, I think it's all self-explanatory, nothing of particular, that's all we have.
I'd like to thank the superintendent for all the work that went into hiring all these people. It's very difficult to get staff these days, and we have some really good, talented people with excellent resumes that we have been able to hire. And it's just a huge, huge job. But, and the personnel committee working with her, which I'm, I'm on. But it's been a tremendous, just a tremendous effort. So thank you.
Dr. Nikosia's done a wonderful job of recruiting, going to teachers' training programs, getting people interested, they come to Highland Park. It's a long process. It's a, it's a, we've talked about a long time, a long, the payout is, it's an investment in something that won't happen for quite a while. So she's really been doing the work for a while, and she's, you know, we're getting some really good science teachers and, you know, a couple of other positions. But all of our positions, of course, are hiring good people, but there are some that particularly didn't look the highest standard, some of the science positions. So we're very grateful for that in particular.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions on personnel? And policy that's made, there was no meeting, because there are new policies. Everything that's on here that we go down to next week, we've already discussed. Right. So there's first reading, remember orientation, I talked about that last time, advanced improvements in that policy, something on functional supplies, and then the rest needs to all the second week, that needs to work. So that brings us to personnel report, which me too. And I actually did write something down, not knowing even how we have this whole class, because I really wanted to spend just a couple of minutes, even though it's super late, to realize that the topic of the after-school, after-school program, and there's topics coming to us about some low scores that we need to discuss, and we'll need to continue to discuss. But I don't want to miss out on the wonderful things that are going on in our schools. You listened to our two student reps who are still here this hour. Thank you very much. You heard, I couldn't possibly list the all that is going on. And that is really our teachers and our staff who are doing all those trips and all those after end-of-year activities. I personally went to the Newsies program, and I thought this was amazing. And we were right up in the Star Ledger for it. I think that yard, if you can tell me, it was in the Star Ledger. I mean, those students are very talented, but our staff prepared them to do that amazing show. I also went to the middle school high school chorus program, which is really impressive. And that is much, to my member, my member, in large in the last year, something to grow in our community's understanding, the type of reception. As the, our press said, tomorrow night's event, I'm sure that will be wonderful as well. Of course, we have, we had senior awards this week. So there's like many, many wonderful things going on. I don't know who cited that, our, our staff, our Dr. Nikosia, our administration are doing all that, so our students are involved in all that. So our students are prepared to be successful. We're having lots of positive experiences being in school. Yes, we, there are many challenges, and yes, we gotta, we can improve and do better. But I do want to, let's take a moment to realize that there's been so much growth in our students and so much, so many good things happening in our district. And that is, again, a result of the effort of our board education, you know, staying up late, you're doing this. But really, it's our superintendent, our administration, and our staffs, and our families who trust us to do things. So that's why she says so. He must admire the leadership of our family, is a very good point. And then maybe we watch our business. New business.
Can I ask one? Can I ask one question about the test results that I know people still have been discussing? When, when we took the GLSA in spring of 2021, that's what this particular report is based on, is that right?
Yeah, the formative report?
Yes, the most recent. Yes, the most recent performance report. And at that point, the, uh, the students had fairly recently come back to in-person instruction, is that right? There'd been a number of months in in-person instruction, but they, do you remember the date at which they came back to in-person? My, my, my question is that when, when they came, throughout the year, there was some pressure about whether the state is going to require the test and that year or not, because students had missed so much.
Twenty-two is when they came back. Twenty-one, twenty-two, school year.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, because this is spring test, spring twenty-two. Spring twenty-two.
Okay, and what, at what point did they come back?
They came, came back September of last year, so that was twenty-one, twenty-two. So fall of twenty-one, when we all came back in person, full-time.
So, so, so my, my, my understanding is because so much in-person instruction had been missed, that perhaps this year there was going to be less test prep than usual, and people were going to focus more on covering the units that they missed while they were remote? Is that a wrong impression or a correct impression?
I'm not sure I understand this.
Was there, I mean, is there?
Because I mean, test prep is not, I mean, every, every time the students, they take assessments and things like that, we align our instruction to the New Jersey student learning standards, and our assessments are aligned to, to that as well. So I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, normally, we can spend a certain number of weeks doing things like practice tests and things like that, but we don't really practice this.
No, that's all embedded throughout the school year when they get like their substantive assessments or formative assessments. We embed those questions ongoing, like math talks will embed that type of rich discussion as part of it. So it's part of an ongoing process. We don't halt instruction for a couple of days to do formal test prep.
Then, then is that standard for all districts? Do you think all districts do the same thing?
I cannot speak to all districts, no idea.
Okay.
I would also say, I mean, from my perspective, I mean, it does seem like for my kids, at least for my kids, English work throughout their time in the district, it does mirror the test pretty specifically. Uh, I mean, I would actually love that, you know, I would prefer to see more reading and long, long essay writing, but there's an awful lot of like, you know, read this article, you know, select the theme from each one. I mean, it's, it's very tailored to the test, not everything, but so it's not, it's the standards, right, which are in the test. So I wouldn't say we don't do any test prep, I would say that some things that you're pretty closely to the test prep at this point in our curriculum, not to insult our curriculum, but, you know, it constrains us to an extent. I don't know that the word test prep would be helpful, since we're all going to make a test prep.
When, when will we get the next uh results? I think Allison was saying something about this.
It takes, so usually we get them, they could turn them over before pandemic pretty quickly, so we, we used to get them like October, which was the COVID era was less than helpful. Uh, but now we usually get them in, in where July, August, depending on how quick they can turn things over.
How, assuming that kind of release.
Oh, yeah, no, a lot. We get them ahead of, we get them ahead of the top of the year. And do we know how we did comparative speaking on the Start Strong stuff? Was that, that was the beginning of this year, this year? Yeah, I think that was the one that was a long, pretty simple. Yes, I can't hear, because there also now, there's movement to change the eleventh grade one as well. The isolation out there with that requirement. There was something in the beginning of this year, right, I followed. Yeah, we know what to do, the one at the beginning of the year. But I thought we did do one the beginning of this year. Correct. So like, oh, we're going to get comparative results on that? I assume so, they in spirit. Right, that's what I'm wondering, I mean, that was. But we haven't gotten them yet. That's what I was wondering, I was wondering if perhaps we should have even done that. Yes, Start Strong, we have done, got no results yet. That was my question, thank you. Yes.
New business, and I would ask what we, something we're to do, we have to talk about, and we have to do next, are you?
It's more than a curriculum.
Yeah. Okay. All right, we're going to leave home comments. Uh, the same before, the national part of administration, we all can help with presentation, and we're, uh, the comments. What policies on one, this four, on one, six, seven, establish a regulated right of public to play the public meetings. Um, I actually am on a battery, so.
Oh, okay.
Bye.
Yeah, yeah, I'm still on, I'm still, I'm at sixty-five percent.
Okay, I'll be, you're live. The same thing, we'll do everybody in the room, and then we'll go online, and we, obviously, we'd love to keep your comments free because we're tired, but we've got time, we're not people talking.
Hi, Abby Stirk, I'm now again, I will try to leave, I know it's early. Um, I did want to say thank you, um, I, I know it's important to take the time. I just, I did want to say thank you, I do want to, I know it's important to take the time to do that. You guys, um, you know, are doing really hard work here, and, uh, you know, I just want to make sure that that's acknowledged and that we do take the moment, you know, on going to bed, and I know that people are really appreciative of the result of this vote. Um, I, I, taking it a step further, I know there is a lot of hard work, as you said, to be done. Um, it sounds like there are things that need to be addressed. Um, I believe the assistant principal position, maybe you're pivoting from that, you know, looking to hire a director. Um, so I would just ask that you do try to be as, um, communicative with the community about this, transparent about this, um, which I believe is your intention. I, sorry, I had some thoughts, but now it's late. Um, as I said in my previous comment, I think your initial, um, kind of focus on cost made sense at the time, and that's what a lot of feedback is, but is this really careful balancing act between cost and programming? Um, and I, I don't know if you have any ability for someone to really delve down into those finances, but it sounds like the program, um, you know, does need to have somewhat of a raise, but I don't think that we should, you know, flexibly say it needs to go up thirty percent as an arbitrary number. Like, what is the number it actually has to go up? And I'm not saying don't raise costs, I'm not saying that, you know, that you shouldn't do things to improve it, you absolutely should. But, um, you know, factoring in all of those components and not just, um, raising an arbitrary number, I think is also really important. Um, and considering what the in-house proposition was, sort of raising, raising the numbers while keeping, um, programming robust and, um, all of that, so I'm tired, I'm sure everyone else is.
Thank you, thank you. And we have some room left on the screen.
Working three houses, I want to do the same thing as Abby and say, you know, thank you for, I think, a long time to think about it. It's good to, you know, think about something that you're thinking about. It's, it's not easy to walk something back, but then you can talk about it, whatever you do. As professor, my heart thinks, I've seen times, is ending up in the upper class, and oh, that thing I said last semester or last class, actually, it's this other thing, so, um, so applause for that. Um, Jen, thank you. Here's a few remarks about the, the, the same thing on test scores, we'll have work to, to talk about this. It's great, optimistic, that, uh, that we can have a little conversation. I want to say three things about, um, some findings that I think were made available to use analyses of test, test, state testing data. And that these graphs are close to on Facebook, now, mirrors from parents' first, banks, and key members, with all those graphs. First of all.
Can you talk to the microphone a little?
I'm so sorry, yeah. Um, first, it's absolutely true, test scores don't tell us everything. Uh, but if you look at the sort of, both the simplest and intuitive measure, the percentage of students meeting state standards, that's a very basic thing that we should be achieving, and so falling short there, that is something that is important. Um, second, I think a really important finding is that in many cases, the, the trends in state performance in these, in these sports started declining pre-COVID. Um, and so definitely COVID didn't have a good district a lot, um, but I think that you can't pin all of the the overall declines in test scores on COVID, it's also important. Um, it's also true, students with fewer economic resources at home tend to need more support in school, and that's a very important principle. Um, but it's also true that socioeconomic status and penalties can't be the whole explanation for these, for these differences in trends in test scores, because in local two thousand fifteen, um, when we were a similar town in many ways, our test scores were on par, in many cases even, with places like the Hudson, the East Project, with higher median incomes. Um, so again, you know, economic resources can't explain the trends in these test scores. Um, and, and what that leaves, and what, what these, these data, these graphs don't tell us is why these trends are current. And it's a complicated question, education and getting it right is really hard, and I do have to work hard at that every day. Um, and so, but like to ask, is that we do the same thing with our, with our curriculum? Our curriculums and our school principals and not, not, not the PBA and all the other one? Um, you know, the things we do in school, the same thing as we did tonight, taking out the aftercare program. Take a step back and say, did we start to do things seven years ago for certain reasons, and they have worked in some respects, but not in others? Did they have unintended events? Is it time to reevaluate, acknowledge that we didn't get some things entirely right, and adjust? Um, I think that this board and this administration is entirely capable of that. I know the community is ready to help you. Um, and I, Jen, I look forward to more conversations this summer and the months ahead.
We found us in the room, uh, move to Jennifer Bobkett, please, to Jennifer.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, Jennifer Altman at thirty-one Walter Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey. Um, I just wanted to make a statement about the test scores as well. I know it's late, so I'm just going to read something I had written. Um, I'm not saying this to open up any debate, the past is the past, and I'm sure the district is looking forward to solving this gap. But as simply one possible explanation for the low scores, there's also worth noting that unlike many districts in New Jersey, we did not open for in-person school in September twenty-twenty. Many others did have big person in the head, head home for lunches and remote learning after the making full day. In addition, our schools ended at one o'clock and for many months did not run any teaching on Wednesdays. At the middle of high school, students had a split schedule, so only met two times a week with each class instead of five. So a lot of curriculum must have either been rushed or cut out to adjust. AP classes did meet on Wednesdays, but they still only got three days of instruction, which is five. That was actually the year my son was in fourth APs, that only meant for, you know, less than three real sessions. Again, the past is the past, and simply posting the stated name explains some of the reason for this extreme drop in scores compared to other districts. What the district does now and in the future will be, is really what's most pressing. And it should be noted that our current superintendent was not the superintendent during the pandemic, and has likely been working hard to fix these deficits our kids may be facing. So I just want to state that, that it's important, I don't think it's been mentioned, that we did have different amounts of time for curriculum um, than other districts, and that may be also explaining the deficits. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sarah?
Yeah, hi, Sarah Pinkley, three grand, I just, uh, uh, want to say, just really short, sweet, I'm last comment, so, um, or at least we're thinking that I just really appreciate all of you coming together, and I think it a great dialogue. And I think, you know, there's a road ahead when it comes to after-school program, and I think that everyone's here to kind of help. So I just hope that, um, you know, tell us what you need and, 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 I mean, you know, yeah, I'm just, I'm really excited about, um, this process, and, and I think everyone here in the line really is as well. And, um, I have lots to say about this test work, not going to do it now, and when you see her to that, and so have a great night and, um, and, you know, look forward to continuing the dialogue as it comes to all that other stuff. And I think no one has the pretty powerful process right now, so.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Uh, any other speakers online? See more hands in the room? Then I leave that major.
Second.
Watch them, they're picturing it, all the papers.
Hi.
Thank you very much, enjoy.